Alrighty, good evening everybody. So, good evening ladies and gentlemen, residents of Newbury. Welcome to the Newbury zoning board of heels. Today is November 18th at 7:30. And I am Ernst Fahn, I am the chair. I have Elaine Baker who is a member my left. I have Mario Conavalli, a member my right. I have Michelle Weider, an associate member my right. Jack Kelly, who is also an associate member. And Larry Murphy from the planning board. Administration wise, I have Martha Taylor, who's our town planner. Chrissy Boprey, who is our administrative assistant. So with that, let's open the meeting.
Alright, first on the agenda. The support of the Pink House, Six Plum Island Turnpike. Applicant is requesting a variance reversal, an administrative decision for relief from Newbury zoning bylaws 97-6B, lot area number one, in order to change the boundaries of the existing lot at Six Plum Island Turnpike and create a new single-family lot containing the dwelling known as Pink House, which will not comply with the area requirements of continuous upland in the area outside the Aces on property located at Six Plum Island Turnpike in Berry, Mass.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, my name is George Hall. I'm an attorney at Anderson and Quaker in Boston. And I am here this evening on behalf of Support the Pink House, a 501(c)(3) organization which is trying to facilitate an exchange of land with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service in order to be able to convey the structure of the existing single-family house at Six Plum Island Boulevard to a owner who would restore the house in accordance with some plans that are sit forth in some detail in a draft historic preservation restriction and ultimately conveyed it to an end user who would live there and take care of the house and pay taxes to the town of Newbury. The purpose of our request is, because you know, the structure of the house is conforming use. It's a conforming structure in terms of its setbacks and so forth. The purpose of this application is to create a lot out of the existing three acre, three-plus acre lot that's owned by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to surround the house so that it can be conveyed. And the lot would comply with the minimum area requirements, the minimum frontage requirements. It would not however, comply with the requirement that 80% of the lot area be not within the area of critical environmental concern or within wetlands. And that actually is a feature of the existing lot. The 3.3 acres is also entirely within the ACES and also does not conform, in fact, the new lot, a higher percentage of the new lot would be uplands because all of the uplands on the whole site would be included, which surround the house and the driveway would be included with this. The, we're contending that this complies or meets the standards required for variance. We have the shaped soil and topography requirement. There have to be conditions of the shape of soil or topography affecting this lot that are not generally affecting land within the same zoning district. I believe this is in the residential agricultural district in which most of the town is located. We have a low topography. It is mostly, or almost entirely, I believe, within land subject to coastal storm flow, which the hundred-year floodplain of the coast. It's entirely located within the ACES. Those are conditions that don't generally affect lots within the zoning district. The strict application, second prong of the variance test, strict application of the zoning requirements would result in a hardship. It's a little bit of an unusual situation because we're talking about the owner being the United States government. But we do have a situation in which the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service is really programmatically unable to preserve this house. As they initially intended, are now facing the cost of its removal. This would provide an opportunity to save the house. This is really the only feasible way to save the house is to put it into private ownership, which requires a land exchange with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. And the only real practical way to accomplish that is to get this house onto a lot of the size that we're proposing so that we don't have to try to figure out how to get the entire three-plus acres out of federal ownership, which would really serve no purpose. The remaining land would remain owned by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service would remain, not subject to development. So, the last prong is not that this relief would not substantially derogate from the purposes and intent of the zoning bylaw. I want to emphasize that what this does is essentially allow the preservation of existing conditions. There's no new structure being created. We're not tearing down anything. We're not creating any new wetland alterations. We're not creating the opportunity to develop any more land. Essentially what this just allows is for some of the land to remain in the ownership of the United States government, but a portion of the land around the house to be conveyed to somebody who would have the ability financially to restore it. We need this relief as a first step towards in this preservation process. We need to have the variance in order to get the planning board's endorsement on the plan and to be able to record the plan. We need to be able to identify the lot that's going to go with the house for finalization of a historic preservation restriction because it has to determine what land will be subject to this restriction. And ultimately, we need it to be able to reach sort of our final agreement with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services that the land that will be exchanged for the lot. The lot has to exist for us to be able to reach a final agreement with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife. So if the board were to grant this relief, our next steps would be to then try to proceed to get historic preservation restriction taken care of. And then, once that happens, we would hopefully be able to conclude our land exchange with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. And if you have any questions about the project or any questions about my presentation, I'm happy to answer them as best I can. We have members of the Support the Pink House boards here. Michelle Joseph, the members of her board are here and may want to speak to this as residents of the town. But if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. Are there any, anybody that plans to speak that's not a resident of Newbury? Other than yourself as the applicant? Okay. Does the board have any questions?
It's a clap before the host, but no. Yeah, I don't know. So, it's going to be this, and this doesn't happen. It's only the itself or all of it?
There's three lots.
Yeah.
And we're making it, I believe, a determination on lot one.
Yeah.
In terms of receiving a variance in order just to create this lot. And then, once this lot is created, or if it is created, then it goes before the planning board in order in terms of the division of the property?
The other two parcels are labeled on the plan. They would not be building on.
So that's eight in big, right? Yeah.
I would also point out that the applicant has a year to exercise the variance. So if we don't, are not able to close and record this plan with a deep, you know, exchange with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, the variance would lapse and the plan would not be recorded. And so unless this all comes together, this would go back to being what is now.
Is there any additional information in terms of the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, in terms of their readiness or want to do this other than your presenting this along? I mean, it's a...
There is a written agreement between Support the Pink House and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services. I would say more or less in the nature of a letter of intent. They certainly have committed themselves to this. They're in the process of identifying a parcel that they would like to receive in exchange for this property. But again, we're trying to take this one step at a time and try to meet all the preconditions for that that have to be met. And this really is an important step toward being able to meet those requirements.
May I add to that?
Sure.
So just to clarify for you. The Pink House came with three parcels, total 9.29 acres. This is taking place on the front 2.9 triangle. And just carving out, as he said, the 1.6061 acre, as Paul Donahoe has drawn it, that does contain, as you said, the bulk of the upland. All the rest will be preserved by, nothing will change. Everything will be preserved by Fish and Wildlife. And you know, if this does succeed, it's only our first step here, but really positive one in answer to your, is the Fish and Wildlife on board? We wouldn't be here unless they were. This is something that they feel will, trading this one acre will allow them to preserve many, several hundreds more acres of true wildlife, not on a turnpike. You know, they'll be nesting and deers running around in trees and you know, they will be able to do something far more beneficial for their mission of conservation. So they are amenable to walking this path.
They're amenable, then how does that work in simple, real simple terms? In terms of the land swap? Who is interested in giving up 100 acres to? Do they, are they the end result of the owner of this property?
They've identified a parcel that's available. So they will specify, it's essentially two real estate deals that have to all come together and happen simultaneously.
But the person is, so is that person identified of who would do this?
I think there's been some discussion about it. It's not, it's not going to be adjacent to this parcel. So it may not even be in the same...
I understand that. You're trying to save the house. We're trying to create a lot. There's a house on it. Who is the, in the end, the owner or beneficiary of this transaction? And understanding that your intent is to save the Pink House, but there is financial means at some point, somebody's an owner. Like, could I become the owner of this house? How does that, or is it already part of the deal that in terms of the swap, the person that has the land is going to become the owner of the land?
Well, there'll be basically a person with construction expertise who will be kind of the intermediate buyer. But I think once the house is restored, it would be, it would be sold.
Sold on the, it'd be on the market so that anybody would have a chance to own it?
Correct. It would be subject, the plan is it would be subject to a restriction. So they would have to maintain it in a manner specified.
Understood that. But anybody, the house could go on the market and anybody would have a chance to do it? Or is it a predawn conclusion as part of the land swap of who's going to actually own the house at the end?
The ultimate end user is not determined by this deal of the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. The key is our commitment to restore it first.
Yes, just to make clear. Our whole job is to keep the house exactly, you know, the front three sides as it is, the silhouette as it is. No one is going to paint it black, knock it down, build a tower or anything. So the Pink House itself, which the lights would be there. The Fish and Wildlife job is to constantly look for large plots of land to add to their conservation. So the idea is not that necessarily, we certainly looked into, is there someone who has quite a bit of land who'd be willing to do that swap? And then what happens with the house? And we've gone through many potential solutions. And at this point in time, it would be possibly that, the restoration is the, with the preservation restriction, is the focus. And then as the Pink House, perhaps a residence, would then be available. Is that a concern? Like, would the public be able to buy the house ultimately, or?
We're carving up and changing property and usually that happens and people's, I think, see that in terms of value of home of who's doing it. If somebody is identified, if I owned 100 acres in the middle of the marsh and wanted to trade and then I would become the owner of the house, it just seems for the public's interest that they might be interested in knowing that. If somebody's already benefiting because of swapping land, then I think the public, we and the public residents of Newbury would have interest in knowing that as we're, you are requesting a variance for us to go against the zoning bylaws and just trying to understand who benefits. And you know, we're here for the support of the residents and for the town and for preserving the character and aesthetic and the tax base and trying to maintain control and order so as to, you know, have every parcel be a benefit to the town. So if there's already some foregone conclusion and it's, and it's not a done deal, I'm just trying to figure out who at the end of the day owns the house. You know, the board, you're seeking something from the board that we not, do not normally grant because it's listed in the bylaws. And so then, you know, I think the people in town would be interested to understand why and why this is a benefit to them and who benefits from this at the end of the day. That's all. So I'm trying to understand it. I would say that, you know, from what you presented in your initial introduction last month was helpful to understand that this is a long, drawn-out, unique kind of process. And you have a goal in mind. And then there are several, lots of other steps to get it where it needs to result.
I just wasn't sure that I could, I was answering promptly because I wasn't sure exactly what you're asking. So I wanted to be able to answer.
And on the, okay. So that, that is the question, just trying to understand, you know, seeing this. If, if all this is done in the public benefit and somebody has acres and it's a swap, and that's what it takes to preserve the house, and that's what it takes to preserve the house. If, if somebody, if you're doing this and the means is to fix the house, stabilize it, and then put it back on the market, does the money for selling the house then go back to pay for the land that was, that was part of the swap?
Well, I think the answer to that question is that the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service is not into contingencies. Okay, so when the deal is made, they get their land and the buyer owns the house. The restoration partner is not expecting to really make money on the deal. I think that's why it's important that, it's necessary to convey it on the one-acre lot is that the costs that will go into paying the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service from the land and then into restoration of the house, you know, will be, it'll be very, a very near thing to recoup that, to just sell it for what its then-market value will be. So nobody's looking to come up very far ahead here. I think the goal of the organization and its restoration partner is to restore the house and not lose more money than its donors and contributors are willing to give.
Just a few questions regarding the lot. Is it subject to flooding at all? Has it been flooded?
It is within the, you know, female hundred-year floodplain. I don't know.
I've been in the house. We started this in 2015, 2016. The first thing we did, besides knowing the public was truly that interested to embark on this was walk through the house with someone who wanted to be here tonight was sick. An HSCCS old builder who is very interested and has been very committed to the project. Every year, we've done a walkthrough and sixed through the house. Down in the basement, there is about an inch, inch and a half of water simply because they are not running any kind of sun pump, French drain system, et cetera. We even offered, could you get a generator and pay for a sun pump just to do that? And you know, when there are king tides or whatever, water does get close, but I had gone to the highest tides in the worst storms and looked across the way. Water was surrounding every other house, but this has stayed on dry land. And we had a series of high tides. At the time where we had a very long storm, we went inside and saw that it had only risen about an inch and a half more and dropped right back down. So there are no cracks in the foundation. There are no...
That was my next question, you know, just the foundation. You know, the septic system, just for the danger of pollution to the marshland?
Yes.
I don't know what that looks like.
Yes. I, what was that?
That's a septic, you know, the septic will...
Yeah. It's, sorry, I have answers to all these because I have that. The Pink House is not on a vacuum sewer system. It's a sewer system, but it's an E1. It's on a P I O D as well. And obviously, there's no impediment for that. The pipes were new when the house, roughly before the house was sold. I mean, I...
And the concern there is just digging and things like that within, you know, the critical environment area?
Yes. We have looked into many of those things and there has not been the concern. And previous to, in the last several years, I was talking extensively with Sam and Doug. In effect, they went to actually look at the house themselves just with their professional hat off and were very excited to see it was in such good condition. Regardless of what it looks like outside, the bones are good. The windows aren't crooked. There's not a lot of mold or anything. And the roof is not leaking at this point. We really want to get things going, you know, as we've had to work so hard winter after winter. So our understanding is, is that it is absolutely, you know, it looks like thousands of times inside. But there's no cracks in the foundation. The fireplace is straight, blue blood and fine shape, et cetera.
Yeah, I know.
In terms of the requirement from the dimensional regulations and the table of dimensional requirements with note one that talks about the requirements for the contiguous upland, actual lot size and at least 80%, do you have the metrics for, you know, roughly a three-acre lot with 20,000 square feet is like one-sixth? And a 46,000 lock with 20,000 square feet is a little less than half? So in terms of metrics for meeting the requirement or not meeting the requirement, it's an inverse fact that if you divide a lot and make the lot smaller, then the percentage is higher. And saying that, not to make your argument, but just try to put that in perspective of other properties within the zoning district in terms of being equal to or not being equal to other lots as part of the...
Yeah, I mean, it's, because it's all in the ACES, we're cutting calculations that involve zero. So you know, regardless, it'll be the same because it's zero percent of the lot before and after.
But there is, on the plan, it says 20,000 square feet of upland area as composed to wetlands. Do you have any metrics or any information on any of the other lots within the adjacent lots that would be equal to that?
I don't. I don't. You want us to do some analysis of that and submit it to you?
Well, you're, you know, you're asking for the variance on the land and we're looking at, in terms of if you reread the section of the zoning about the shape and the means of the land, but also in terms of the granting of variance basically being not more detrimental or in keeping with the zoning district. So is, in fact, this, this lot somewhat equal to other lots?
Well, I thought you were talking about sort of the first component of the variance test was, do these conditions sort of generally affect other land within the zoning district? And I mean, obviously, there are some other lots immediately around this that are also low lying and include area within the floodplain. I mean, it's not, it's not completely unique, but bearing in mind that this district encompasses a great deal of the town, the percentage of land that's in use that is in this area is relatively small. And again, in terms of the purposes and intent of the zoning bylaw, I think that the zoning bylaw does favor the preservation of non-conforming uses and structures. And what we're doing here is not intended to create new development that aggravates the kind of environmental problems that these requirements were intended to prevent. So because we're not proposing to really change, you know, as you drive down the street, you will see absolutely nothing different before or after this variance is granted. So in terms of the kinds of impacts to which zoning is intended to address, we're not in any way making that situation worse.
Is, is there any, so there's no changes intended to the exterior of the house? Or would the house need something to be modernized or updated?
I think there's a small exterior change within the upland footprint that's contemplated. Again, that would be because the house is, you know, more than complies with all the setback requirements. That would be something that would be permissible. But there's certainly no, no plan to do any kind of, you know, extensive work on the exterior of the property other than to bring it back to the...
Any extension upward or outward would require a finding from the ZBA and a reapplication at that time in order to get a building permit because it is within the P I O D.
Okay.
So there are some checks and balances there. There's one last question. Because Jack and Michelle. Comments or questions? Yeah, I have a, what might be looking on my map.
A question. Any thoughts about making this a landmark versus a for-sale house?
We certainly have taken an hour and seven years and looked at every viable solution. And landmarking was one, whether we owned it for educational purposes. We got, Congressman Milton made a congressional decree to see if that could be explored and the answer was no. We tried to see if they would be able to auction it off as surplus and they said, the house is surplus, but not the land. If you'd like to move it, it was about that size. And we went down so many paths and got very close with several. So here we are. And it does have the ability to have some educational use. But in terms of, you know, the ability to turn it into something like, you know, nobody wants, everybody wants to still have a very low-grade use. They'd want it to be an ice cream store, you know, which it cannot be based on the municipal, you know, directives. So yeah, that would have been great. We also asked them if we supplied them with an interior and how would they just prefer it shouldn't be like a lighthouse.
That was my other question. Does it need to be occupied?
Yeah, no, I don't think...
I mean, apart from the fact that you want someone taking care of a structure once it's been repaired, no, not legally. I think it's certainly not critical to the goal of this project to have somebody living or buying the house. I think that's what makes the economics work because we have to buy another piece of land to acquire it and then we have to, then somebody's got to put a significant amount of money into updating it. And so because, I mean, these folks have raised money to cover transaction costs and to, but not so much that they're covered, they cover all of those costs and can, and then just donate the house. And then there's the problem of is there, what would be an allowed use that somebody would actually want to carry out there? So I think the reason that, the idea is to have an end user ultimately buy it is just, it's what it's owned for. And that's what makes sense economically.
No, I don't know if it's inappropriate, but I have this kind of impassioned plea coming up, which is that until 10 years ago, since 1925, this was a residential home. And people, you know, did build fires in the fireplace and they did live in it regardless of tides and all of that stuff. And when that person passed away, the children who are fans of this effort, you know, could not sell it at the time for the price they had wanted. And the Fish and Wildlife said they're interested. And the family, the mother was very happy with that idea as a way. And they did, perhaps they might use it at the time or at least that's what they've expressed. So, you know, making it a residential home again, you know, on one acre that is the upland as opposed to the triangular acre it comes on, which is all we're trying to do. We're trying to find a way to keep this house for the community and it's become an identifier of our region. People know where they are. People know where they are when they see that silhouette, and so that's all we're trying to do. And getting this variance means an enormous amount to be able to do that.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the project? Yes, sir.
I think it would be nice to see it as a single-family house.
State your name and address, please.
Oh, yeah, Joe Smith, Forty-four Old Point Road.
Thank you.
So I think it would be nice to see it as a single-family house, somebody occupying it rather than just a dilapidated thing that keeps on sinking farther and farther down, you know, or run down. Sorry about that.
I live on Hutchins Road, and I agree with him as well. It would be nice. It's kind of sad every year seeing it getting worse and worse. I think it would be nice to have it real short. I think it sounds great. I didn't even know about it. Amy Thurlow, sorry.
And, Marla, I think we have a letter in favor. Do you want to read that?
Yeah, there's a couple here.
Yep.
So, I'll read, this is...
Either one favorite first.
Yeah.
Do this in order.
Yeah. Okay, so this is from Jeff Christensen for McLeod Avenue. "I would like to express my sincere support for the Pink House group and endeavor in obtaining a variance for the changing of the lot lines at sixty Plum Island Turnpike. I've been in support of the STPH since the beginning and applaud their continued efforts over the last six years. I put a Save the Pink House sticker on my window, and homeless immediately began getting questions from residents and tourists asking how they could help save it." "This group has been met with many obstacles, continue to pivot and push forward to get the job done. They've banded Newbury Port residents together as a community to accomplish a common goal, not for monetary gain, but for nostalgia and the fun factor that helps make Plum Island a place we all love. This type of effort is very rarely seen and is commendable. This project has at times seemed like an impossible task, but Rochelle and the STPH group have not wavered and continue to do whatever it takes to save this landmark that is beloved by so many. As an owner of two businesses on Plum Island and a member of the community, I can speak for a large number of us who wish to seek the Pink House for me. If it weren't for the STPH, efforts wouldn't stand a chance. Please consider bringing this variance to keep the whole rolling on this amazing effort."
All right. Is there anybody that would like to speak against the project? Yes, sir.
Hi, Ted Kedzewski for Plum Bush. I'm not against it by any means. Matter of fact, I second that letter. You guys have done a great job, and thank you. I live across the street from the house, and every night the sun sets with the Pink House in front of it, and it's just amazing, amazing. Whatever I can do to help, I'd be more than happy to. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? For or against? It's here. All right, Marla.
Yeah, a letter from Norman Kay. "I would like to go on record with my absolute objection to any proposal which will allow to change or offer relief reversal of this previous decision to the contiguous upland location or any changes to the boundary or the preservation of deteriorating structure romantically referred to as the Pink House." The question for the board is among others, why, this is from Lynette Lica. "The question for the board is among others, why offer variance to the prospective developer who has no rights to a property that is not for sale and owned by the federal government? The preservation of habitat, especially wetland habitat, is more important than speculative hopes of someone who intends to acquire the property to sell to a developer. The Pink House lot sits on federally protected wetland. It cannot be built upon or improved. If the Pink House is torn down, the entire section of marsh from the house just after the airport to the turnoff to the refuge will be clear of human development, and will enhance the already wide-open space for birds and wildlife. The solution is not offer a variance to build on federally protected and on wetland, even if that variance is now moot point, it could set a precedence many might regret."
Okay. Any more comments from the board?
I'd like to comment again on that, because we do understand some may not, you know, like, nobody likes chocolate or ice cream, not everybody likes the same, you know. For the folks who may think, it's an eyesore, it will not be, and for those who don't really care one way or the other, it should really not matter. In terms of protected wetlands, a lot of people are under the impression that it's part of the refuge when it's not. They just, oh, this, it was available. They are far more excited to not only keep everything around, end up ten years later with more than they invested for one acre. And so their mission far greater by being, getting hundreds up to five hundred acres somewhere else in our region to truly preserve water. There is nothing particularly nesting, it's just, it is wetland, and there's not to say that about it. It is abutted on the other side by farmer, maybe. So there's tractors on that, there's oil, and people are paying, it's not like it's untouched, and Ben Greenbelt on the other side, and then Mr. Gordon and whatnot. So I guess that, you know, if there's no thing there, it opens up that vista, but it's pretty much very small on the vista, and often people, more people think it enhances it, so.
Thank you.
Bye.
So, Stahal, maybe you'd like to just sum up again the conditions of the variance to the land, tip the foot, and the benefits, or do a recap?
Yeah, the recap is that the relief is for the creation of a lot to preserve what are the existing conditions of the sighting and location of a single-family house. The grounds for the variance are that in order to economically exchange for and then pay for the restoration of the house, it needs to be set aside on a lot of land of basically minimum size, something smaller than the existing lot that sits on now, and that any change, because it is already a non-conforming law as it is, any change to it requires a variance, a variance is from the two provisions in the footnote pertaining to minimum percentage of upland and minimum percentage of non-ACDC land. And again, our contention is that this is a historic structure that enhances the value of the immediate area, is iconic to the people who live on Plum Island, that its preservation is a benefit to the community, and that the variance will not substantially derogate from the purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw, because it does not facilitate any further development of wetlands or ACs. Thank you.
And fish and wildlife doesn't pay any taxes down here currently?
All of this land is taxed as it currently stands, and when, at such time this lot goes into private ownership, I'm sure that the assessors will be promptly informed and will do their duty on behalf of the residents.
I might want to see just some additional information about the other parcels in the area. Is this one out of twenty, or is, you know, the similar parcels have zero?
In terms of the PIOD and its requirements of the neighborhood on Plum Island and setting the conditions for which it's judged, you know, as we previously discussed, and here in terms of the language of substantially, without substantial detriment to the public good or without nullifying or substantially degradating from the intent or the purpose of the Newbury bylaw, is the intent of understanding the existing context of the area in which it sits, kind of like, you know, or exactly what's it like for the PIOD. So is that something here?
Just a thought. And talking about your matrix on, you know, how many other houses had, you know, in the East Pacey, yes, had similar...
They would all be existing non-conforming lots, and that may or may not be the case. And then we have Plum Bush Downs, which was created and unto itself as a unique piece of property that doesn't classify itself as individual lots, but as a kind of name. And if we take the individual lots, we've been through that a couple times with greatness of area, yet the individual units seem to have some issues, but the intent of the whole is, and how it was created, when's it, makes the benefit for those houses' conditions.
Right, okay.
Jack, anything?
Hi.
So I think, I think I would like to make a motion here. And so I'd like to make a motion that we have Town Council draft what would be a favorable decision from the ZBA for committing, as the ZBA is the granting authority to grant a variance for sixty Plum Bush Plum Island Turnpike, proposed Lot One, we're not judging Lot Parcel A or B, as the site plan and lot for not meeting the Newbury bylaw, Section ninety-seven dash six, A1, which is the part of about any building or structure therefore must meet the specifications within the bylaws, which then turns you to the next section, which is B, Table of Dimensional Use, which then goes to Note One, which is the requirement for the contiguous upland. So I think in essence what we'd ask is for the Town Council to draft a variance granted with respect to this particular lot, owing to the circumstances relating to the condition of the topography and the fact that it's not changing, being altered, and/or modified of such that the hardship is, is that it sits within its current zone and it has existed and it's pre-existing. And to that, as I had said before, it's granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially degradating the intent or the purpose of the Newbury bylaw. I think the, and with this, there are several conditions, and there are several items of sequence that must happen, and I think that should be part of the conditions that the applicant would procure a mass historical preservation agreement for the house, that that agreement would be then reviewed, approved by the Town of Newbury's Historical Commission. And then there's, as you had mentioned, and I had a slightly different understanding of maybe what might have to happen, but you would have to file the decision of the variance in order to create the lot before it goes to the planning board?
Yes, yeah, before it goes so that that variance would be...
You have to have a lot before you can go to the planning board.
Right, right. So the variance would be noted on the A and R plan with a book and page.
And then you need... It may be, and this is what I was getting at with exercise, that obviously we have to show the planning board that we've obtained the variance. None of this goes to record until everything goes to record, and so, and if it doesn't go to record, it's not exercised. I mean, you have to create the lot, so if the lot is not created pursuant to the variance within one-year period, then the variance lapses.
Hence why Town Council will draft the sequence of events and/or buts to the conditions of a favorable motion, so that we all get it right, and it stands the test of time, because that's what we like to do. And then with the understanding that if there's anything whatsoever that expands upwards or outwards, that, you know, would be back before signing a building permit to be rejected, to be appealed for a finding for the ZBA again, at which time preservation restriction and the understanding of the lot would, you know, be reviewed from there. Does anybody have anything to add or condition or...
Would we be able to see the draft before we approve it?
Yeah. So Town Council will submit the draft, Town Council will send it to Martha, Martha will send it out to us, because there's only three members, we can't talk between the two of us, any two of us can't talk about a hearing, so we will get it individually, we'll review it, we'll show up at the meeting, the board will discuss it. And at this point, we'd keep the meeting open, in which sometimes we'd close the meeting, but I'd like to keep the public meeting open. If there's any additional information that's favorable or negative would come before us or can be submitted until we close the meeting, we would discuss the decision and close the meeting, and vote on the motion as, or the decision as is or as amended, or as per any additional information that is received.
So do you then want to continue the hearing to a time date certain?
Yes. So as keeping the meeting open, we would continue it to another time. That could be next month?
Or if you want to set a schedule?
Yeah. So what's...
It's not here, Thursday, December, so on your Wednesday, lots time? I can make it...
Pull out their calendars.
It's the fifteenth.
So I think what we're saying is that we typically have a meeting on the third Thursday of the month. And as we're trying to keep things moving and moving things along, we could propose an alternate date that doesn't, is not December sixteenth, but sometime before that to help move things along.
I need to appreciate it.
We would need Town Council to give them some time to actually draft a motion.
First of all, she doesn't sleep.
So, Marla, you can't make the twenty...
Sixteenth, I can too.
Can you make the ninth here? May, I'm sorry, the ninth?
Yes.
Of December?
All right, so we could do it the ninth of December. Saves a week, but it does continue to move things along.
Time, zoom in and person. The room appears to be clear that night.
Since we're keeping it open and we're continuing, I'd rather meet in person if we had closed the meeting and we were just reviewing the decision, then it would be favorable since there's not additional information and people don't, we're not assuming that you're submitting anything that someone would want to look at. So seven-thirty on the ninth, is that okay to you?
It is. We appreciate your attending to it that quickly, and we are grateful for your time this evening.
I think you need a second on your...
A second.
A second?
Second.
All those are clear? All right, all right. Thank you. Thanks, Marla.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Somebody didn't check their mag?
No.
I was about to... "The applicant is requesting a special permit finding for relief of the Newbury zoning bylaws, ninety-seven four D, upward extension in order to raise the existing single-family structure and construct a new single-family residential structure on pilings of the lot located at sixty Hutchins Zero Road, Plum Island, Newbury. Assessors map U zero-three, lots twenty-four, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight."
Is the applicant here? Evening.
My name is Gerald Fandetti, and I currently live at Seventeen Southern Boulevard, Newbury. And the purpose of this presentation is that we are looking to build a new house on Seventy Hutchins Road and move there from our current residence, which is at Seventeen Southern Road. And the purpose of the move, we've lived on Plum Island for over fifteen years, and we are getting older, my wife and I, and she has developed a condition, a heretic condition in her spine that makes it very difficult to walk upstairs. And our house on Southern Boulevard is three stories when you count the elevated pilings. So it's... So, it's very difficult for her to, um, to manage the stairs, and, uh, we've been looking for a parcel of land where we could build basically a one-level house. And, uh, Seven Hutchins seems to be that type of property where we could build primarily one level, however, it has approximately a six-hundred square foot, uh, second story to the house. And, um, all the, uh, the, the design that forms with all the requirements of the P I O D, setbacks, F A R, coverage, all that, and, uh, it's a fairly simple one-story house with a six-hundred square foot second story, fairly simple design, setback more than is required by the zoning, um, and it's built on, basically over the existing house location, so it doesn't expand into the veget- highly vegetated areas of the property. It's basically the, uh, presentation. If the board has any questions, we'd happy to answer them.
The board have any useful question?
Uh, just a couple of questions on page four of the application. You mentioned that the square foot of the garage and park report was two eighty, but then on the next page you have it's three hundred and sixty.
It's eighteen, it's eighteen by twenty, yeah, three sixty.
Three sixty, okay, so this is a mistake on the application?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And, um, on page two, the square footage for primary dwelling, you have twen- just twenty-nine. Twenty-nine. I know it's, it's a probably an error.
Yeah.
We just want to make sure everything's-
Yes.
-correct on this application, so-
And the, uh, the survey plan has all the correct numbers on it.
Okay.
The, um, the application was done before we completed the survey and finalized the, the actual numbers.
This is beyond the second lot, which is the smaller, and they're combined, is actually-
There's three lots, all identical.
Three lots.
All identical, uh, seventy by seventy, fourteen, seven, fourteen thousand seven hundred total.
Good.
Yeah, I had a question, the, um, the bedroom on the upper level?
Yes.
I see that it has its own entrance?
Yes.
With a little butt bar up there, a little stand?
Yeah, we're anticipating that, uh, in the two years, we may need help, so that would be a bedroom for somebody that helps out as, as an assistant.
It's kind of almost like two bedrooms, isn't it? With a shared half, and it's got a closet, no?
The sec- well, um-
Labelled an office, but I'd rather distinguish it from a bedroom.
Yeah, I, um, we have two sort of extra spaces, one is a studio for my, for my wife, who is an artist, and I'm an architect, and the second space is for me, the, the two level. It's two, the first, I couldn't get enough space on the first floor, so I have two stories for the office space, that's why it's two levels.
Do you have, um, the existing structure on the lot? Do you have, uh, plans for that?
I don't have plans for that, no.
Okay. Cause in, in terms of the plans that you've provided, it, it, um, you know, the studio has a, has a sink in it, you have two separate bathrooms with, two separate bedrooms with full bathrooms.
Yeah.
You have the office, which has a half bath adjacent to it, and then you have the, the, the room above, uh, and so typically on Plum Island, you're allowed the same plus or plus one bedroom from the existing structure.
Yeah.
So, we'd like to understand, improve out the number of bedrooms.
Yeah, the existing house has two bedrooms.
Okay.
So we can add one, which we did.
And the studio, you know, understanding what you're, you're saying, and then you have an office, um, the studio looks like a bedroom, and the, the stair to the upper, upper unit, and you're gonna have somebody live, um, in your house, that's a fine line between, um, an accessory apartment, which you're not allowed on Plum Island.
No, that's what it is, it's a, it's my office, are you saying I can't have an office there? Is that?
No.
Is that prohibited?
No, I'm just thinking in terms of people that present plans and, and it looks, and looks as something different than other than what they're saying, not saying that you can't have an office, but in terms of, of having private baths and two bedrooms, having-
Well, my wife and I don't sleep together all the time, so we have separate bedrooms. Okay? That's, that's just the lifestyle that we have.
That's fine.
We are professional people, we both have, uh, professional, uh, do professional work, and we need our own spaces, so that's why we have an office and a studio. The third bedroom is for who knows what, we're both approaching our eighties, um, at some point we're gonna need help, but we love staying and living on Plum Island. We could, uh, purchase the property somewhere else in Newbury, as a matter of fact, we did, but it didn't work out because we wanted to be up Plum Island, we lived, we've lived here for fifteen years. So the whole idea is to put everything on one level. The house we have now on Plum Island is very similar, it has office space rise up, has a studio for my wife, it has, uh, two bedrooms, and both of which have bathrooms. It's not, uh, it's not an unusual property, and I'd like to emphasize that, it's just something that would fit our needs.
Well, that, that's kind of where I would go with my question too, have as many offices as you want, but upstairs one did sort of look like a bedroom, you know, since there's already another office downstairs.
Yeah, it's, it's two-story office, it's, it's beautiful. It's only because I couldn't get the space, uh, the twenty, we're twenty percent coverage, so I couldn't get more space on the first level, I would have loved to have everything on one level, but I couldn't.
In terms of the layout and, and the bedrooms, the use of the studio and the office, I think we have any questions, you're pointing out that when people present things and then, uh, on Plum Island, in terms of creating something that is something other than what it is for-
Yeah.
-assumed rentability, um-
I own two houses on Plum Island, one, one of which sometimes I rent, sometimes I rent, I've built three houses on Plum Island, okay? And all of which conform to the codes as we went along, the codes had changed since the first house, it changed for the second house, and it changed for the third house, and I complied all, with all these codes, and I worked with the officials of the city on all those houses, so, um, I don't have a problem working with, with all of them. I just want to emphasize that this is the property that we, we need as a couple. We, our children are grown, they don't live with us, so-
Right, but just, we're, we're here to help protect the public interest if something doesn't get created and then be used for something other than it was intended.
I understand that.
And I think the, the issue of having that separate entrance, um, is something that, that needs to be changed, because having, you know, having some, understand your, your goals and your, your family needs and your planning for your future, and don't have any issue with that, but allowing a, an apartment or a bedroom with, with access that's not from the house, um, is an apartment, and, and-
Does the, does the Newbury zoning ordinance allow accessory apartments?
If not, it's not in Plum Island.
It doesn't say that in the zoning code, or maybe it does, but I haven't seen it. If you could point it out, that would be very helpful.
I'll look for a bit of determination, we've been through this, I think, before with others, um, in, in terms of the use, I mean, of the one and two family, and the two family are existing conditions in terms of the P I O D.
I just remember reading the section about, um, the as- auxiliary apartment, um, didn't say it was not applicable to Plum Island, and then when you read the D O I D, didn't say anything about auxiliary apartments, so-
So, Plum Island, P I O D, ninety-seven dash four, um, part D, allowable uses, municipal uses owned by the town of Newbury, single-family dwelling subject to eventual requirements set forth in the tables below. Non-conforming uses and structures excluding single and two-family structures, provisions of the I D shall apply to the pre-existing non-conforming structures. So, you don't have a pre-existing non-conforming structure, and-
Yes.
-you're a single, you're building a single-family dwelling with an apartment, so it's, it's not a single-family dwelling.
I know that, but it doesn't, the, the section that allows for auxiliary apartments does not restrict it only to-
No, it's, it's for the whole town, it's the P I O D that then restricts you.
It doesn't say that.
It says, "single-family dwellings."
I know, but the addition of the auxiliary apartment does not restrict it to all, to, uh, the rest of the town and not Plum Island, it does not limit-
Where's the P I O D section?
That section.
Yeah. Well, I'll have to find the use, I don't have it in my fingertips, but that's, that's where we've been.
And it's not an apartment, that's the other side, it's, uh, it's a bedroom, it's not an apartment, it doesn't have a stove, makes it classified as a residence.
You have a bath, you have a sink?
I can have as many bathrooms as I want here in my house, there's no restriction on bathrooms, there's no restriction on closets, there's no restriction on those kinds of, uh, facilities in the house. It's only restricted with the number of bedrooms, which is three, which I have, three bedrooms. It is not an apartment because it is not classified as an apartment.
Just cause you don't classify it is what doesn't mean it-
It doesn't have a kitchen, a kitchen facility, meaning a range, which by, by state code makes it an apartment.
Right.
Right?
Which just seems excessive for the house then to have a bedroom with, with-
I intend to have someone that's gonna live there part-time if I need it, that's the purpose of that bedroom.
Right, and then you add a, a second car to your driveway, and you, you're going against the intent of what a single-family owner is.
You can't have more than two parking spaces?
You can have two parking spaces.
Okay, then I can have two parking spaces, that's not a restriction, I'm just, I'm not here to, I don't want a second apartment, I just want a facility where people, some, a person to assist my wife and I. She has a medical condition that at some point is gonna need somebody to help around the house. That is the purpose, that's one of the purposes of the code for auxiliary apartments, that's one of the purposes.
Great, so now you're saying you have an auxiliary apartment, right?
No, I'm not saying that, I'm, you're saying I have it, and I'm saying it's not, but I could never find in the code that restricted the auxiliary apartment section to only the area of Newbury that does not include Plum Island. It's, I interpret that as the entire town, not restricting Plum Island. It doesn't say it, if you could find what it says, you know, it doesn't apply to Plum Island, fine. But even then-
Wait, do we get the original plans from the existing house and we can-
Sure.
Get some additional information?
Yeah, plus they need to fix this application, cause they've got-
All right, so we'll-
Two-bedroom, two-bathrooms.
Understanding what you're asking for and understanding what I'm seeking, I, I will find or I will confirm.
I can make the motion if you'd like.
And I say, what, um, about, about the apartment and whether it's, it's requirements in terms of the P I O D?
I'd rather, I, I don't want to classify it as an apartment. And I don't want, I don't want a cla- I, I just want it as a bedroom, and I, I want to have a separate stair to it as a second means of egress, there's no reason why that should not be acceptable to-
Run it through the house, and it seems perfectly reasonable.
It does go through the house.
No, run it through the main part of the house so that there's, it's access from within the house.
The, the last, uh, building inspector required us to have two means of egress from the house, that's the requirements, I understand it from the, the building department, that's a second means of egress, I mean-
All right, I, I'm not in a position to, um, I, I need, yeah, I need more time to figure out, um, from what we've been doing in, in terms of finding the language that I'm after in the-
I understand.
-bylaws, if I don't find it, then, then that's fine, I think what we have is we have some other issues with the application and making sure your application is the same, has the same information as the plan.
I understand that, sure.
And I think in terms of-
The original plans, original site?
And the original plans that show-
Two bedrooms.
-how many bedrooms that you have so that we can say that you can get a third bedroom, that's been the standard procedure for the, the board.
I can make a motion if you want.
Oh, stay on the same, so, is, is there anything with any of the math in terms of lot coverage, yours, F A R, setbacks, obviously seem to be in order, lot size, frontage, the height? It's, it's, is there anything? What are we asking to come back with, is an, an updated application that matches the information that's on the ground?
And an original, and the original site plan.
And original site plan, so we're asking for those two things, and I'm confirming within the bylaws about the P I-
Original site plan.
Original si- well, original site-
Original plan of the house.
Right, and it would be helpful if you had just one elevation with the height on it, because as part of the P I O D, you're seeking, you know, you're, you're demolishing and rebuilding and so you're-
Elevation of the existing house?
Yes.
That's what you meant.
With the height of-
Elevation of-
Yes, please, just, and just has to be one to show the height.
It's probably a building code question, but it does look like there's only one entrance on the first floor, one, there'd be, there's just one in the first floor?
Yeah.
Well, that makes the one in the second floor the second here.
Yeah.
We always have this one egress for, like, over thirty-two, thirty-nine.
I know, and, but they didn't, I think, just you climb the first floor.
Total first floor.
Otherwise, it's kind of like an end run.
We're keeping very close to the number. Close to the number in terms of measuring it out. So just ask that you check for, again, with the F A R checklist, that just make sure we're doing numbers, because I think we, in terms of what Marius looked at, what Elaine's looked at-
Just doesn't match, I'm sorry, the, the application?
Yeah.
The checklist, the five checklist, you're only listed on two bathrooms, you have three.
Right, right.
So you don't have the square footage of the third bathroom in there.
Okay, uh, yeah, uh, okay, I missed them, so the application-
Right, the information calfs out on the plans, then we're there to see that bathroom represented the same on the application.
Right, okay.
And just check your square footage on the third-
I, the square footage, I did, when I did the application for square footage, I rounded a lot of it off because it didn't, the format didn't fit the house, so-
But this has to match where your plan's gonna be, so-
I know, with the for- what I'm saying, the format didn't match with the house, so that's why in some areas the numbers aren't correct, but the square footage on the survey plan is one hundred percent accurate.
So you're saying you want to take the numbers from the survey plan and-
Survey plan is a hundred percent- Survey plan is one hundred percent accurate.
All right, so you want to take those numbers and redo your.
Well, the survey plan numbers are total numbers, they're not individual numbers. The, the application has individual spaces that have to add up to the, right? So it's a little different.
Yeah, you have, like I mentioned earlier, primary dwelling twenty-nine, so that needs to be fixed, okay? And you have the garage at three sixty-one and two eighty on another, so.
There's a couple mistakes on that application.
Yeah.
We were working on the survey plan right up until the time we submitted, but I had applied for the application earlier. So there was, there was a, a time change, and things change as we were finalizing the plan.
Okay, so I, we make a motion to continue.
Do you want to see if it's anything?
Yeah. And I'm still reading something here, so. Do you have some? You all set? Do you have any other questions?
No.
So let me, let me see if I understand. If, if you can't ensure, if we can't interpret the accessory apartment issue clearly, then your understanding is that I should remove the stair? Is that what I should remove, or the wet bar, or what should I remove?
You can have a stair up to that room. It would, it should be from inside the house and not outside, so that it is accessible or accessed by somebody that's not going through your house. So you have a single-family house, somebody comes through the front door, goes up the stairs, and they can go to that bedroom.
Okay, that's, that's your position if we do not have this auxiliary apartment.
Correct.
Clarified.
Yes. And it's, it's not so much the elimination of the bedroom, it's the access to the bedroom which creates it, makes it something else. That's, that's what I'm thinking. And I'll either, we'll have it, and I'll get town council to help me understand it, and.
See if there's, yeah, okay.
And as soon as I get that, we can send an email back to you and let you know for the meeting.
That would be, that would be great, because I'd love to know where I'm going, and I can design.
Yeah, and I'm trying to stop you, I'm just trying to make sure we follow what we said we were following and what's written here.
Well, I, I understand that, and as a matter of fact, I, I spoke to town council, who was my attorney handling this particular site. So she had hands-off, can't talk to me about it. So I just said, okay, I did not want to get into that issue as an auxiliary apartment. But I did, I, I read through that three or four times, it didn't come up with a negative that would not allow me to do it. But I didn't want to do it, because I just called it a third bedroom, because that's what I have, I have three bedrooms.
Okay, okay, understood. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the project?
Hi, Pete D. Dunn, Teshmolu, Lot Two Eight, Ten, Twelve, Fourteen, Melody Lane, and Twenty-One Hutchins Road surrounding the property. We've had no objections, we support this, the overall issues are, obviously, whatever details you have to work out, but then the overall structure and the like, we're supportive of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Martha, you got the name in?
Yes.
Peter D. Dunn, D E D O N.
What was your first name?
Peter.
Peter, sorry.
Martha takes copious notes, we just want to make sure. Thank you. Lady behind?
Hi, I'm Kim Sue Martyr, I'm at Six Hutchins Road, directly across the street from where we proposed to do this construction. And I'm, I'm in favor of the end product, but I'm quite upset about the process, because I work from home. I'm employed by a company in Utah, and I've worked for five years from home. And this is going to make me have to rent an office at my expense for the entire, the entire life of the project. And so I know this is probably not the place to ask about this, but I need to know when it's gonna start, when your proposed finish date is. I'm fairly concerned about the nails, the construction, the trucks, because as you know, Hutchins Road is very, very narrow. And I can hear everything that is going on across the street, when the crane was there last week, or when the surveyors were there. I cannot participate in New York. And so I'm not against the project, it's only going to enhance our neighborhood for sure. But I'm really concerned about the project itself and how it's going to impact my life. I can't, I certainly can't sell the house while we've got the construction going on. I can't work from my house while the construction is going on. So I would only ask that, you know, I, obviously, I'm having problems also ameliorating at this point. I know what it's like to get old, and I completely appreciate what your goal is, completely support it. But I need some open communication so that I can modify my life, because I am going to have to drastically change my life because of this. I am not against it, you just have to appreciate where I'm coming.
No, I understand, yeah. We, we can keep you informed as to the construction schedule.
I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna cost me to, to have you do this project, so.
Well, it's a, it's a single fam, single-level house, pretty much, I mean.
But dragging the pilings and the construction and the trucks, and I've got, as everybody in the neighborhood knows, three very loud dogs. It is, it is not going to be conducive to me working from home, so.
Well, I'll keep you informed of the construction schedule.
I really appreciate it, because I'm losing sleep over it, honestly.
Mr. Vanetti, you've built houses before?
Yes.
So it's not his first rodeo, so I'm just offering some insight to.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you can give me a timeframe, I'm, I'm gonna have to, you know, rent month to month. I've found a place that I can rent, I just, you know, something I didn't know, obviously, so.
Yeah, well, it's, uh, construction schedules are notoriously difficult to adhere to.
I understand.
And given the.
I've been watching that house down the street from us, and they're doing a amazing job, but it's, you know, it takes time.
Given the, the environment today with delay of delivery for practically everything, you just.
Would you estimate a year?
I'm estimating less than a year. I know, I, you know, I see a lot of work going on. Once the exterior framing is complete, the pilings and the framing is complete, the siding pretty much, then, you know, the rest of the, of the activity is indoors. And, you know, it doesn't generate that much noise.
I'm worried about, I've already replaced one tire, like nails, and just, just the confusion in the construction is disruptive, and I understand that's normal, you can do a project, but that's why I'm here, because it's disrupting my life as well as yours.
I give you the, the best schedule I can.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody else would like to speak for the project?
Can I just ask a question? I, I know you mentioned it, but I missed it, I also, um, Hutchins Road, again, again. And I'd missed the square footage of the first floor. I heard the second floor was six hundred, but I didn't hear what you said.
Uh, with the garage, it is. It's twenty-nine hundred.
About right.
Yeah, it's twenty percent of forty-seven hundred, so fourteen, so it's, yeah, twenty-eight hundred, yeah.
And, and sorry, that includes the garage, you said, or just the dwelling?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Thank you.
And the garage is eighty by twenty, three sixty.
Yeah, by the applications, it's two thousand eight hundred fifty-six.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I'm making motions to continue the meeting to get, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, yeah, I just had. I'm, I'm also, y'all in favor of the house, I think it's great, Joe Smith again, forty-four oh point road. Think it's great that you're gonna build a house there, I like the fact that it's gonna be a single-floor house, I think that's kind of neat. I, I am a little concerned about the, you know, apartment or whatever that's gonna end up being, because, you know, as you move on, you know, you'll go to Florida or wherever, wherever's gonna move in there is definitely gonna turn out into an apartment, so. A little worried about that, that's the first I heard of that, so hopefully that could be resolved favorably.
I think the, the town, rightly so, has modified their zoning orders to allow for accessory apartments. And that's a good thing, because housing is very expensive in, all, all over, but even in, more so in Newbury. And there are people that need housing, young people, my son, he needs housing. Not that he's gonna be living here, but there are young families that need housing. And he's, the auxiliary apartment idea, I, I laud, I think it was a great idea that the town came up with.
I, I do want, it, it's the overly district that puts the restriction on, on that, on Plum Island, I don't know.
Yeah, well, I'm not, we're not sure.
We're not sure, we got, I've got to find in the letter of the law. But they're detached and attached accessory apartments are allowed. And if you have an attached apartment, then all utilities have to run through the main house, the owner has to occupy the main house. There are some safeguards to just not have an accessory apartment and then have somebody rent out two separate.
Yeah.
Units.
Exactly.
And there are some size restrictions which I haven't looked at. So if, if it is allowed, it's, it's of a certain size to the main house. It's not just, you know, have a little main house and then have a huge apartment type of, so there are controls.
Yeah, exactly.
I have one more question.
One more question.
Jumping ahead to the construction progress, are there hours that you can construct? Because, I mean, if it started at seven A M., and I thought that was a little bit early for construction.
No, that's standard, seven A M.
Till when?
I think it's five.
Seven to five?
Yeah, it could be seven to seven, I'm not sure what the top rule is, and I don't worry.
I don't think it's seven, it's, it's in the, it's in the bylaws, you can call a building inspector, it's probably on the website.
Okay.
Yeah, the only, sometimes if, if you're pouring concrete, you can't stop, what they normally do is apply for a variant of, I think it's called a variant, so for time.
Extended permit from the building inspector controls it.
Right, right.
If you have any issues, you have the building inspector to talk to.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I haven't anticipated going long, on that.
We're up on piles, there's not much concrete to.
Yeah.
Anybody else from the audience? Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
Yes, we're gonna, we're gonna make a motion to.
Make a motion to continue the meeting to get additional information for some of the old plans of the original structure. Correct the information on the application to match the.
Yes.
And anything else?
Nope, second?
Second.
Time of date, certain?
For, we have to make that a part of the motion if we decide that afterwards, oh, you're gonna make them next?
Yeah.
So we have a meeting on, do we have any new applications, Kristen?
Yes, uh, three.
Three.
I've emailed the team today.
Okay.
So there will be a meeting on the sixteenth with those three projects.
I won't be here.
Two of them are, it's two and four forty, it's three, but one is special permanent, one is a variant of class.
You won't be here until the sixteen.
But it's two different.
So could you, could we, could we all handle the, the new plus this continuation for the ninth, since we've already set up that meeting?
I'm not sure there's time to notice, do the public hearing notices for the ninth, other than the.
I don't know, do you need, do you need to do that if it's already been advertised?
No, no, this is for new, new applications that come in.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, so let's hold the sixteenth. Mario's not gonna be here, but you're gonna have to, well, Michelle, you sat through it. So we can decide between Jack and Michelle. Jack, you're the next ultimate up, so you heard what happened tonight, we can thank you.
I would defer to Michelle in this case, since it'll be her first time, that will be my gift to you, Michelle.
You're so kind, Jack.
Just to differ, Mario's not gonna be here on the sixteenth. So because we have now, because we finally have associate members, there's no waiting or additional time for you, because the associate member can fill in, because they heard your, this hearing.
Good.
Unless you want to do it to the ninth, because you've already got that.
I would prefer the ninth if we.
All right, let's, let's put you on the ninth, we'll have two on the ninth, and then we'll have, what, three on the sixteen?
I may on the sixteen, could say. Three, but one of them's the same address, it's a special permanent and a variant for the same address, so it's like two.
It's two and one.
Yeah, two and one.
Right, so we'll hear you on the ninth, is that acceptable?
Thank you.
And Michelle, you're, again, you're available on the ninth, and the sixteen?
Yes.
Will you be here on the sixteen?
You had a sixteenth?
Okay.
I just got out of the night.
So twelve, twelve nine, seventeen.
Yeah, well, nine, we'll hear this. You will email a.
Yeah, I will. Or all town council.
I will.
Kristen, do these of the, the.
Oh, awesome, we should have. I wasn't thinking, that's awesome.
On relation to joining the meeting?
That's okay, and you're going to have to, this is what you really need, the proof, so.